Eric, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for tonight, Monday, if ever referred to order. If we could please stand and preside to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item five, consideration of superintendent's report, women's retirements, resignations.
So I have a list of 11 retirements, and these are just extraordinary educators in the whole district. I just want to extend a deep appreciation to this extraordinary group.
Thank you. Of teachers and administrators, well, our administrators were announced in the last time. These individuals will be retiring at the end of this year. They've dedicated their careers to the children of Farmington, and we really wish them health and happiness in their retirement. So 11 retirements.
And I'd like to thank them all for their service. It's always amazing when you see the list of, you know, 32 years, 27, you know, 47, 41. It's just, it's amazing the commitment of the teachers to them, the district, so thank them on the record. Okay, next item on the agenda, six, six A, unfinished business, continuation of budget review.
So this is our, the night that we invite our administrators to the table. They're an outstanding group of principals. Dr. Singer is here to talk about different areas of the budget. There's not a lot of new items in this budget, so we thought we'd just highlight some of the really wonderful programming that we have in place. Thought it was a good time to just highlight some of that and then answer any questions that you have. I do want to thank our administrators who are here. They go through this budget process. At times, it can be very difficult because we're, you know, trying to bring forward, you know, a responsible budget, but also at the same time, a budget that meets the needs of all learners and provides a stellar education to all students. So I'd like to invite them up, and we have Dr. Singer, who's here, our Director of Special Services, Dr. Carrie Huber. She'll be representing K-6 principals. Dr. Scott Hurwitz is here from IAR, and Dr. Bill Silva from FHS. So hopefully, I think we're going to need one more chair, potentially. We'll have you come up. Where would you like to start?
Elementary.
Element, starting at the beginning, elementary schools. Carrie, you're on.
That would be me. And I promise I won't make you try to guess which vision of the graduate.
Oh, please. I'm still scarred from that.
I got it right in my book here.
I'm feeling pretty good about that.
I like that.
It would be good for our budget process.
Who's getting the circle, Scott?
So as.
I'll have a reputation. I like this.
So as Dr. Singer presented at the last meeting, the first item that I'd like to talk about is consolidating the SCL classrooms from East Farms and Noah Wallace to just Noah Wallace for next year. And what that means is really, we're asking for 1.0 social worker and a .5 special educator, really to support these complex learners, both diagnostically and therapeutically, as Lori spoke about at last, last meeting. At Noah Wallace, I mean, we believe in the whole child, and we believe that giving children, all children, the opportunity to learn in a safe environment where they feel as if they belong to the community is very important. And with the additional staffing, we feel that building that support system for these children at a young age is vitally important. The next area that I'd like to talk about is the integrated units. We continuously ask for supplies for these science and social studies units. These are consumable products that we utilize in the classrooms. If you were to visit the classrooms of all of the elementary schools, you would see the students engaged in learning, using materials that essentially, as you utilize them, for example, if they're building a filter for the water in order to clean it, they have to utilize those supplies, and those can only be used once. So each year, we do have to ask for that again. Another increase is in the area of technology. Think Central is a resource that we have utilized, I believe K-8, and this is a large increase this year. For six years, Math &amp; Focus provided these online materials free of charge. And so at this point, we are now obliged to pay for those different tools that our students use. Now, Alicia unfortunately wasn't able to be here this evening, but, you know, she and I talked a lot about how the teachers really utilize these online resources. They create their smart book lessons from these resources. There's virtual manipulatives that they utilize. It really allows our children to be self-directed in their work utilizing this. So it's very important that we are able to continue this utilization of, like I said, Think Central. Finally, I do want to, you know, going back to what I was talking about, the social-emotional learning classrooms, it is important to note that we do have a district-wide committee this year that we've met with, and it's a wonderful group, K-12, of educators who, again, like I said earlier, believe in really making sure that all children belong to Farmington Public Schools. And we will be making recommendations later in this year from this committee work, and we're very excited to share those with you. And that also will then guide the work that we're doing, both at the elementary school level as well, all the way through up into the step program as well, and the high school.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie? Andrea?
I actually don't have a question. It's just more of a comment. I really, really do support the social worker and the special education teacher. I think it's very important that we all support the social-emotional learning of all students, but especially the young, early learners, and some of most vulnerable kids in our school system. I think, you know, it was mentioned in last week's board meeting that, you know, providing what we do by maintaining and you started building a program way before I got on the Board of Ed, Lori, and previous board members before me have maintained these services, and I think it's important that we continue to improve and expand upon these programs. It was mentioned last week that these kids, it gives them the opportunity to stay in their school district, they get to be among their peers, they have a chance to participate in extracurricular activities, and I think it's really important that we maintain programs like this, expand programs like this, and keep the kids in our school district.
Thank you.
And I guess I do have a question on my.
The floor is yours.
If, if, if we didn't improve upon this program and expand this program, these children are at risk of being placed out of district, correct?
Oh, most definitely. It impacts really everyone. It's not just those children, it's their classmates as well. It's really supporting, if you think about a community, and understanding that there's so many different individuals within a community, and it helps the children also recognize that, you know, that's, I mean, the restorative piece that I know that Scott was able to show you what a restorative circle looks, a circle looks like, that type of understanding of what it means to be a community, and everyone together is a community, and you can repair relationships, all of that is, is really a big, bigger piece of it. And this is just a small entity, but I think it would impact everyone if it wasn't successful.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Carrie? Thank you, Carrie. Okay.
Go to the middle school next.
Right up.
Thanks, Dr. Silva.
You're last.
So on behalf of the faculty and staff at IAR, we certainly want to extend our thanks and appreciation. I know the members of the Board of Ed and the community have put a lot of time and effort and energy and hours into reviewing the budget and planning accordingly to give our kids everything they need to be successful, so thank you for that. A couple of updates, I hope I'm not redundant or too redundant, but certainly, the focus at the middle school level is, is very similar to what you're seeing in the elementary K-6 as well. So as you heard from Lori a few weeks back, in terms of social-emotional learning and the importance, it's not just a factor at the elementary school, but I really think K-12 is our focus to continue to support students socially and emotionally, and we've seen that at IAR as well. And so one of the, one of the additions that we're seeking is in addition to the care team for the district that would spend a focal, a focal point or a focal amount of time supporting students and faculty and staff and administration at Irving Robbins. And so you saw a little bit in terms of our, our hope to continue to engage in restorative practices, management in the active classroom, which is a tool that's used across the district, collaborative problem solving, which is a strategy that adults are using to solve problems and help support students across the continuum, and our focus on challenge and support and multi-level interventions or tiered interventions. And so that care team member would be somebody who's supporting not only students who are receiving specific social-emotional supports, but really, the way we see it, is implementing those supports across the tier-one level, which means all students would benefit from that access. So we would intend for that care team member to be spending time in classrooms across our school and supporting teachers and making sure that we're providing the very best practices in social-emotional learning for all students. They would be a part of some of the teams that we have at IAR, including our student support team, which looks at problem solving across the continuum, not just for students who are identified with IEPs or 504 plans, but for students, again, across the entire school. So we really see this as, as a big impact on our entire school community and affecting all students, and teachers and administrators for that matter. So we've seen a rise, as you saw in Lori's presentation, in mental health needs and supports and services and risk assessments. And so certainly, having staffing and support to, to aid students in that area, but again, being responsive, but being proactive as well, and making sure that we're proactive and really doing the best we can to, to support that program at the middle school level. So we appreciate any consideration for that at IAR. Secondly, as Carrie mentioned, you saw an increase in the Math &amp; Focus text. That, that trend continues at IAR as well. Overall, we have a 2.6% increase, but again, a big expenditure, and that is the newly, the new cost for the Math &amp; Focus and Think Central resources, as you heard Carrie talk about already, and its importance for both self-direction and providing a 21st century resource for our students to utilize. So we use it for things like reteaching, extra practice, and enrichment. So going again back to challenge and support opportunities for students and giving them access to that tool anywhere they are, that electronic tool. And teachers utilize it as well to, to prepare materials and, and learning tasks for our students. And so we, we think it's vital to continue our success with our math program. Excuse my voice, I'm battling a cold this evening, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to keep talking.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
You don't have to talk anymore.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come before the board, and I want to echo Scott and thank you for your continuing and ongoing support of our schools, and particularly the high school. And the budget process, I know, is a challenging one, but, you know, you always give us the resources to do what we need for students in Farmington, and I think we're good stewards of those resources and, and use them well. So a couple of things I want to highlight first are, you know, things that you've done that are kind of related to the budget process, but not exclusive to the budget process, your ongoing support for professional development with our PD subs and our half-days, and I know the calendar includes additional half-days. Those are incredibly valuable to us, and we have two of those half-days this week, which I know can be sometimes a disruption to, to parents, but for teachers and for our own professional growth, we use that time well, and we really look forward to it. The new credit requirements that you just recently approved in response to both state legislation and our NEASC requirements, again, that's something that we're excited about. It gives us an opportunity to really think about how we have students meet those credit requirements, and I don't think it's going to be a challenge for us, but it actually opens up some new opportunities for us. And, you know, we're still thinking about, we just had eighth-grade parent night last week, and talking about those to, to our parents, we got excited about kind of the new way of talking about that, rather than just, you know, English, social studies, math, really talking about humanities and STEM and looking at a senior project. So again, appreciate the board's support in that. Your ongoing support for addressing our facility issues, and, and I know this is something that this board has had as its focus for a few years now, and, and we seem to be, you know, again, starting that process in, in a very positive way with, with the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and moving forward with both the support of the town council and the Board of Ed to address some of the facility concerns. So I look forward to observing from afar how that process evolves. And then finally, just the support you give for the instructional and curricular innovations that happen at the high school, and sometimes these take resources, and sometimes they are creative use of the resources we already have. But the board has always been very supportive of that in terms of how we look at curriculum, instruction, and assessment to work with our students to achieve the vision of the graduate and really focus on the skills that they need for 21st century learning. So a couple of things that we have asked in this budget that you, that we are hopeful will have your support have to do with staffing. One is a .1 increase in the English department in order to support a writing seminar, which would then lead to a student-staffed writing center. I think this is a great opportunity for students, really, in terms of self-direction and resourcefulness, and an opportunity to use their advanced skills to help out their peers. And we already have, we're in the midst of course enrollment, and we have a critical mass of students who've expressed interest in this. So if this course is able to run, it would be a one semester course, which would really give the training and support, and then they would then be that cadre of writing tutors who would be supervised and, and staff our student-led writing center, and then they would, you know, perpetuate from year to year. And then the other staffing focus is, has to do with .2, it's kind of hard to figure out how to say it. It's a .2 increase for the dean of students on the administrative side, which would mean a .2 reduction in the teaching responsibilities of the dean. And really, this would augment our administrative, administrative staff, and .2 does not seem like much, but in terms of really assisting both on the supervision and evaluation side for teachers and on the management side for student behavior, it will have a really dramatic positive impact in terms of allowing that individual to increase caseload, so to speak, on, on both those sides, and to balance out the responsibilities of the administrative team in a really positive way. And I think it would be a very beneficial move in really support the building administration in a time of, of significant and growing need on, on that side of things. So again, thank you for your support. We do a lot of exciting things at the high school because of the, the backing we have, both financially and just as the board is cheerleader, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Bill. And you're always welcome to come back and shower thanks on us. We'll gladly take it. But if any questions for Bill?
What was the genesis of the fellowship, the writing fellowship?
So we have had a writing tutor for at least as long as I've been here, and we've just really seen the, really the potential of students to really expand that role because of their developed skills in terms of writing. And we do peer tutoring in some other areas. The National Honor Society students do peer tutoring, and advanced students in rural language do peer tutoring. So we really thought, let's take advantage of a resource and extend the opportunity to students, and they will get help on both sides. Both the students who take advantage of that role and become those tutors are going to have a much more advanced and sophisticated understanding of, of the writing process, especially as they teach it to others, and then they're able to help that many more students. Right now, the writing tutor is very well utilized, and she both has students visit her for help with a particular assessment, or working on an essay, or college applications. She also pushes into classrooms. So this will really expand what the writing center can offer. So I think it's a great opportunity. It kind of builds off a little bit. We have a, a teaching assistant program that has maybe six to 10 students, students who are advanced in a particular subject area, who are now, for course credit, working with an individual teacher as a support to the students in that class. So I think we have in some of the advanced economics classes and advanced calculus class, music theory is usually the AP level. So again, it's really giving these students who are very motivated an opportunity to really excel at the highest level, not just to show what they can do as a student, but now to show what they can do on, on the teaching side of things.
I just would add, Michelle, that I think our department chair went out and visited some other schools, as we do. We look outside ourselves for best practices in other areas and came back very excited about this model working well in another high school. And just kind of, you know, reflected back on, it's very much a college-like model to have a, a writing center staffed by students, so I think our students here are well-prepared for that.
I agree. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yes.
I'm going to miss you, Bill.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, taking time out of your night, joining us.
Nothing to say, Lori?
I have nothing to say.
Do I get to walk away? I will.
I mean, were there any questions, or was there any?
There's any questions for Lori?
From last week?
Because I know you just.
We just had her presentation, so I mean.
I do know what you said. With, with the transition to the, from East Farms to Noah Wallace, keep us updated as the year, as the budget year goes, because, you know, we understand, I mean, I'm sure you know that we understand the demands, and I really want to see how that's going.
Absolutely.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, seven, new business, consideration of motion to adopt the 2018, 2020 school district budget. I mean, following Saturday's meeting and the end of the meeting and some discussion about targets and fiduciary duties, and probably driven by somewhat random usings yesterday during a lackluster Super Bowl game, I jotted down just some thoughts I had. Sorry, Chris, I know the result was great, but it wasn't fun to watch.
I thought so.
I just jotted down some thoughts, and before we, you know, jump into the budget, I, and if everybody would indulge me, just, you know, some of the thoughts I had, I just wanted to express at tonight's meeting, you know, following the end of our day on Saturday and the anticipation of considering approval of Kathy's budget. And if you would, I mean, the classic definition of a fiduciary is one who acts in a position of trust or confidence on behalf of another. Fiduciaries are expected to handle the affairs of others with at least the same care and prudence that they apply to their own affairs. The role of a board like our Board of Education is one of strategy. Its primary responsibilities are to establish and clearly articulate the mission of the organization. In this case, the Farmington Public Schools, maintain a strong management team to run the organization in accordance with the policies and objectives that further that mission, and monitor progress towards the mission's fulfillment. Some may confuse the responsibilities of management with that of the board. The execution of ongoing operations and the development and implementation of institutional programming are the responsibility of management and staff and not the board. On an ongoing basis, the board's role is one of oversight, in which it reviews and assesses management's success in carrying out its job, including adopting a budget. Even though our board does not manage daily operations, it does not simply preside. The Farmington Board of Education should actively supervise management and the administration. We set standards that are clear and objective, make sure the management team understands their position, and ensures that the actual running of the district is well-supervised by a committed, efficient, responsive, and experienced administration. Any board and its members have three primary fiduciary responsibilities, and each of them is equally important. It's critical for each of us to practice them in both word and deed, and to make sure that our fellow board members do as well. The three fiduciary responsibilities of all board members are the duty of care, the duty of loyalty, and the duty of good faith. The duty of care means that each of us must give the same care and concern to our responsibilities of board members as any prudent and ordinary person would. This means we should be actively participating in board meetings and on committees. It also means that we should be actively working with other board members to advance Farmington Public Schools' mission and goals. We fulfill this responsibility by overseeing and monitoring the administration's activities and by being responsible for strategic planning and achieving the district's short and long-term goals. The duty of loyalty means that we, as board members, must place the interests of Farmington Public Schools ahead of our own interests at all times. And the duty of good faith insists that after we, as board members, have explored all the options for a particular business decision, we must make the one that we believe best serves the interests of our stakeholders in the district. The point of this introduction and these preparatory comments is not to call out or call into question or doubt a single member of this board. From the time I became a member of the Farmington Board of Education and during my tenure as chair, I know that I may not have pleased everyone along the way, we may have had our disagreements, I may not have met everyone's expectations, but I've always strived to do my best as a board member and as chair, not only for the board and administration, but for the community as a whole. Governing is not easy, work for any of us, and as Teddy Roosevelt famously said, "It's not easy being the man or woman in the arena." And please know that I felt honored to work with such great people on this board, both past and present, who not only have embraced, but have embodied their fiduciary responsibilities as board members. As I noted at the conclusion of the meeting on Saturday, I have never questioned that each and every one of us takes this role very seriously. We take our role seriously with regard to developing and furthering our educational mission through our oversight and support for Kathy and all her administrators, and we take our roles seriously in achieving those goals in a fiscally responsible manner. But our budget process does not exist in a vacuum. While the Board of Education's silo may be by far the largest, it is still part of the overall town budget, and we must be cognizant of and recognize that. We must remember that the town as a whole and our town council are undertaking a similar task on their end that is designed not to only achieve the Board of Education's goals, but achieve the goals for services and infrastructure needs for all the stakeholders and the entire Farmington community. As part of that larger budget process, there has been the discussion of targets being presented to the Board of Education by the town council. In that, Ellen asked me on Saturday, I will again confirm that prior to this morning, I never had a discussion with any council member about the targets. But I think we should remember that these targets also come to us relatively late in Kathy's budget process, which began months ago. So yes, I will confirm that we have been given a target of 2% to 2.5%, but what does that mean? I think we, as board members, would be remiss if we sacrificed our fiduciary duties and financial responsibility and did not understand those targets as we go through our budget process. On the other hand, I believe we would be equally remiss in terms of our fiduciary duties if we, as board members, abdicated our fiduciary duty to our mission as a Board of Education and somehow felt absolutely constrained by those targets as we plan for the next year and beyond in delivering on our educational proposition here in Farmington. I personally have, and once again, like years past, am taking those targets as thoughtful, well-intended, well-considered, and a studied guidepost to us as we consider our budget and continue to go through this process. Those targets are designed and intended to provide us direction as we go through this process, so that we never forget that our budget must be considered holistically within the context of the town's entire budget, and that we do operate within certain financial parameters. And while ultimately, we may have differences of opinion, I would sincerely hope that each of us does not view the town council as an adversary, but rather as a partner in this fluid and dynamic budget process we are now going through. I cannot predict our ultimate landing point on the budget, given we are at the very beginning of this process, and it's a very real possibility that we may have to review this budget again. All I can say is that I, and I hope each of you, will utilize all the information available to you as you make your decisions, for only then is your decision fully informed. Again, I believe that we should never be offended or offended. Again, I believe that we should never be offended or somehow feel intruded upon to receive financial guidance from the town council, as I equally believe that we should not feel absolutely constrained in the fulfillment of our duties by that guidance. Strict and blind adherence to either of those positions would, in my opinion, be an abdication of our fiduciary duties. And most, like most things in life, the philosophical landing point is likely somewhere in between those. We should not cut budgets to cut budgets, and we should not equally spend money to spend money. We should not approach this process with a sense of distrust, nor should we blindly approve without scrutiny whatever comes before us. In the end, we must make informed decisions based on all the information at our disposal. That said, I have reviewed this budget as presented by Kathy and the entire administrative staff here in the district and thank them for their time, efforts and transparency preparing and presenting this budget to the board. And I've reviewed this budget like all zero-based budgets that Kathy has put forth during my tenure on the board. And there have been sometimes heated debates at this table and reductions made in past years, and there may be more reductions borne by necessity this year. However, I can undoubtedly say that this year, as in past years, Kathy's budgets, as reflective of the cumulative efforts of all her administrators, come to me in the first instance as presumptively reasonable, subject to our further review and required review. Kathy, I believe that you and your administrative staff, through your continued dedication to this community, have earned that right to that presumption of reasonableness. So, Kathy has put forth, and we have tentatively approved, the budget at 3.02%. I believe that when we went through this line by line on Saturday, the comments and questions at the table, my own further review and reflection over the weekend, and the financial austerity behind the proposed budget became self-evident. Setting aside contractually negotiated salaries and benefits, other costs like increasing special needs support, the renegotiated bus contract and never-ending infrastructure needs, there's not much that, if cut, would not have a direct and significant impact on programmatic deliverables. The budget, as tentatively approved, may not be the town, within the town council's targets, but that, again, in my opinion, does not make it unreasonable on its face and not worthy of our support. And again, remember, we are very early in this overall budget process. So, you know, I sincerely believe that this budget allows the administration, this board, to continue to deliver on its educational mission and proposition in a fiscally responsible manner. And I can never stop coming back to this slide, which, you know, I may not be the smartest guy in the room, but it defies logic how we can achieve sustained academic excellence while we are ranked consistently at the bottom of the 169 towns in our state. So, this is example A of our fiscal responsibility and your efforts in leading this district are example A in our ability to achieve academic success for all our students. So, that being said, I'll be voting in favor of this budget as presented and tentatively approved on Saturday, and so may be submitted to the town council for the review. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion to formally approve the budget.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, second.
Yeah, motion.
Second. Okay. If anybody has any comments?
I just want to, first of all, we've been on the board now together for four or five years, and I have to tell you, and we haven't talked about what you intend to do tonight, and I can tell you that, that was your finest hour. Okay? And I would ask that your comments be attached to the budget when it's submitted to the town council for approval and read it as part of the town council's record. I, I'm proud to call you our chair and our friend, and my friend. That was very, very well said. And I, I've been thinking a lot about some, some of the things, just kind of on my own, because you know how I think about it and how my mind works sometimes, I've over the years. And to echo what you just described in terms of entitlement of presumption of reasonableness that Kathy's work, and it is entitled to, in our capital improvement discussions, we were handed a sheet that showed us over the last 27 years how our average budget increases, what our, what our budget increases were for the last 27 years. Prior to 2008 and 2009, before Kathy's first budget, the average increase was over 5%. Since Kathy has been our superintendent, the average increase is about 3%. So, for anyone to suggest that our superintendent doesn't take her responsibilities with respect to zero-budget balancing, about zero-balance budgeting seriously, does not understand or chooses not to understand the process. You also made the comment about this particular increase. I did back-of-the-envelope math before Saturday. Almost 1.6 million of this increase, of the 1.98 million, is contractually obligated expenditures, whether it be in salaries or benefits. So, lest we call into question the efforts of our negotiating committee, I think we did a pretty good job on those contracts.
We absolutely did.
Certainly. Part of that, $300,000 of that, is the bus contract, which our town was clamoring for us to address. We had to address that, and we did it in a responsible way to prevent us from having to go down the deep end of an open bid where who knows where that would have ended. After all that, I think the numbers around $360,000 in, in additional spending, and we're talking about special ed needs. This budget is as good as you could possibly have in this, in this era of austerity, as you say, knowing all the demands and all the pressures that are currently placed upon our budget process as we go out over the next 20 years. And I wholeheartedly endorse your comments, Chris, and I look forward to supporting this budget as presented.
Mark?
Yeah. I agree. Thank you very much, Chris. I agree with Bill that your comments should be submitted to the council when it's sent over, and I don't think it could have been said any better. So, at this point, I would like to go ahead and call the question.
Okay.
Second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? So, I should probably, where to go? Get a form where to go? There it is. Okay. So, the motion will read, "The Farmington Board of Education recommends that the Farmington Town Council a 2019, 2020 budget of $67,785,605. That reflects a total increase of $1,985,707 or a 3.02% increase over the 2018, 2019 Board of Education budget." All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? It's approved. Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item, can I have a motion to move it to executive session?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? All right. We're in session. All right. Okay. We're back in session. I'll just wait for Ellen to come back.
She stepped out.
No, no, but she's seen if anyone was out in the hallway, that was minded to come back.
Oh, okay.
All good? Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item nine, report to board chair. I mean, I, obviously, we've been busy with the budget process. I have nothing to report, other than I would just thank everybody again. It's, it's a lot of work to go through this information and, and digest it and think about it and, and come to, you know, consider thought on how you feel about it. So, I thank everybody for that, and I would just ask for your continued support without knowing the dates off the back of my hand, the dates that are listed in the packet for town council meetings and, and additional, and those additional meetings and the, the...
Page five of our budget packet.
Yeah. So, the, I would just ask for your continued support at the town council hearings, starting February 26th would be the capital, right?
Six o'clock, yep.
And then, after that, March 12th, March 13th, and if necessary, I guess, the 14th.
Where are those listed?
But they're at the back of Kathy's packet. They're also in your agenda, in this book, too.
February 26th isn't on here.
That's capital, but it...
I think they're posted online somewhere, too.
Oh, okay.
It'll be on page five of your, in here, Andrea, in this. Page five will also have it here. So, you see it's a continued support for the budget as we work our way through the process, and we'll see where it takes us. Other than that, thanks again, and if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? We're adjourned.